The Board Curriculum Committee to Order. The committee would like to welcome the audience and viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings on live at TCAPS.net/Board. Recording meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. So we have a large group here today, so just quickly go around the room and just introduce yourself for everybody. That would be great.
Sure. I'm Emily Speke. I'm an Executive Assistant to our Chief Academic Officer Secondary.
And I'm Kelly Walter, Executive Assistant to Dan Tyesworth, Chief Academic Officer Elementary.
Tiffany Palmaville, Executive Director of Special Education.
Erin Sorensen, Instructional Coach and Math Specialist for Elementary.
Kelly Obranovic, Instructional Coach and ELA Specialist for Elementary.
Dan Tyesworth, Chief Academic Officer for Elementary.
Linoi Humphreys, Vice President of the School Board.
Erica Moon-Moore, Chair of the Curriculum Committee and Trustee.
Beth Patrissi.
Jenna Van Wagner, Superintendent.
Jessie Hilton, Chief Academic Officer for Secondary.
Ben Berger, Principal Central High School.
May Kepler, Assistant Principal of Central High School.
Kristen Studeman, Principal of West Middle School.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. That was great and again, welcome. So we have set aside this time for public comment. I'm guessing we have no public comments. So we will move right into, I know, right into procedural items. First item is the draft meeting minutes. Are there any changes to these minutes?
Have none.
No. Okay. Hearing no changes. They will remain as posted. Next item is the 2024-25 TCAPS District Course Catalog and Updates. And Jessie, there's no updates at this time?
There's actually not any updates at this time.
Okay.
Might be the next month. We'll see in December, but probably won't see any until second semester.
Okay. Perfect.
Do you have the clicker?
There's two clickers.
Here, I've got a mouse. I have a mouse. I'm sorry. Got it.
And again, just for those listening, this is a standing item on our Curriculum Committee. Moving on to informational items, so we, the Board Curriculum Learning Series, so Tier One Academic Data. I will refer this to Ms. Hilton and Mr. Tyesworth.
Sure. So we really, Dan and I, were talking about just the great work that all of our leaders do at our site and thought we'd give the Board a little bit of an overview on, we're eight weeks into the school year. I can't believe that. End of the first quarter is this Friday, November 1st. So we want to share a little bit with you guys about what have we learned about our students academically, all of our kids at Tier One? We're talking about learning and data we've collected on every student at all grade levels. And then how are we responding and how are we supporting our kids? And how are we ensuring that we're supporting all kids even if the kids don't rise to the top immediately, but we're ensuring that every kid is supported and pushed and grown to their fullest potential across K-12?
Yeah, there's just a tremendous amount of data collected in the fall with NWA, AmesWeb, PSAT. And now that we have this data, we just kind of wanted to show you what we actually do with this data, how we help students, how we drill down to the student level, how our principals, academic coaches and specialists can have a structure through all of our buildings that's pretty similar in order to provide a lot of tier, it comes down to a lot of Tier Two support.
Great. So I think we're going to start with elementary, right?
Okay. So for elementary, we actually engage in Tier One and Tier Two data reviews. Primarily, we're talking about Tier One today, but those Tier One data reviews can lead into those Tier Two as well. So when we meet for Tier One data reviews, it includes classroom teachers, principals and coaches. And they're usually an hour to an hour and a half long depending on the school and the building. So we'll meet in those grade level teams and then there's like a rotating sub that comes through as we meet. And then the coaches are the ones who facilitate that data protocol, which is GOT Data Now What. That's the protocol we all use. And we, those coaches then provide consulting and resources and then frame questions and wonderings to build capacity. So the goal is really to be looking at that data and enhancing their data literacy skills as well as thinking about what their action steps are going to be. And so that's kind of the people that are at the table and then we're just going to go a little further into what that looks like.
And how often does that happen? Like, once a week? Once a month?
So we do it in the fall, the winter and the spring. Every time we collect that benchmark data, we'll come together to look at it from that lens. But in between those times, we have checkpoints where we'll meet with teachers as coaches and help facilitate the progress of those action steps that are established at those meetings. So the work with the data is ongoing throughout the year, but the actual meetings are at those three checkpoints.
Got it.
Got it. Okay. I'll talk a little bit about briefly what that process looks like. So as Kelly mentioned, it's the GOT Data Now What protocol. And that is common amongst the elementary buildings at least. So the first phase is really to get people, I mean, they're coming from their classrooms to kind of ease them into it, the cognitive shift by making predictions. And so that looks like making a prediction, this is, this is grade level teams typically that are coming together. So this would be the first time that they've seen grade level data. So we predict at the grade level, at the school level, and also make predictions district level, grade level wise. And that, like I said, it's kind of just ground in the data and get ready for really digging into it. That's Phase One. Phase Two is really getting into it, what the data looks like for that grade level cohort within the building. For ELA, we're looking at a couple of different data sets. NWA is one and we're looking at the different instructional strands within NWA. That's true for both math and reading that we use NWA. We also now are using AmesWeb, AmesWeb Plus as a universal screener. So for our reading data meetings, it's NWA and AmesWeb. And this year, that's something that's new and different for us to be using that for all students, the AmesWeb. That actually is very helpful. I would say everybody agreed it was good to have more, more to look at. With math, we're also, and this is also a bit of a shift, so NWA has been the standard for quite a long time, but Delta Math is recent, was recently added as another data set throughout the district. Before, it had been done in some buildings, but not all. But as of this fall, it's all buildings giving that screener. And that looks at readiness for that, the current grade that a student's in. So it's gauging whether they have what they need to be successful in the current grade. So in our teams, we're looking at those data sets. And in many, most buildings, it's one day is ELA meetings and then a different day for the math meetings. So it's two data reviews in grade level teams. So looking at that data and as a team, creating some narrative statements. So that's looking for just statements that are nonjudgmental, just based in data to summarize what they're seeing as far as strengths of the grade level cohort and areas of need. And from there, we try to prioritize two statements to start looking at what to do about those areas of need. So it's drilling it down a little bit.
Can you give an example?
Sure. Like what an, what a area of need might be?
Right.
Yeah. So one that was pretty common this year, because we were, we did give the AmesWeb Plus screener, all students, first through fifth, had an oral reading fluency assessment. And from that, we were able to dig a little further and do some diagnostic data, looking at some of their foundational skills like phonics knowledge. And so one action step that came out of a lot of ELA meetings was looking, that there are some phonics gaps. And so it would be to try to remediate that. And I'm not just talking like Tier Two, but you know, moving up. Even some of our stronger readers might have some gaps in those foundational skills. And so then it's, well, that's an area of need. Now what?
Like another example from NWA. We had fourth grade, for example, at our school that wanted to, that had a lower, one of their areas of growth was in vocabulary in NWA. So from there, they looked at the vocabulary standards and picked one that they might focus on and chose to create instructional routines and tasks and activities around that particular area so that they could practice or do that with their students in order to see if they could see growth in that particular area. So the image here just kind of narrows in on how we take that big data set and we slowly help the teachers to make it into something that's actionable and that can get in front of students in a way that will impact the data in the future. And so starting with that big data set, then picking that focus area, then creating those narrative statements like Erin was talking about, choosing that standard that goes with that statement and then creating the action steps.
So it's personalizing the data.
Yes. Yep. And creates an opportunity for them to collaborate as a team too and talk about the things that are working or not working and then adjust their instruction based on that.
Thank you.
So much responsibility.
So we've kind of already talked about this a bit, but so once it's been narrowed down, the area of focus and two examples we're given, the phonics and phonemic awareness knowledge or vocabulary and identifying the standards that you're going to address, it's then creating an action, an action plan. And the visual that's up on the screen is one that we've, we've been using or at least this year. So looking for moves, like specific things that can be done in the classroom that are high impact, but not necessarily high effort. So that high, you want it to be low effort, high impact. So you're looking for things that are going to make a difference for, you know, the group of students that you're working with. And the power really comes in the brainstorming. And I would say that the coach's role is really that, that questioning. So listening to the ideas that teachers are, are giving and then kind of helping to shape what that could look like in terms of action steps that they can make happen in their classroom. So the brainstorming happens and then it gets narrowed down into what can they do, like really specific things that they can start working on immediately. I don't think I have anything else to say about that. Do you have any questions though, before we move on in terms of that last phase, which is the action planning?
I have one kind of vague question. It's hard to really pinpoint this one. But you know, sometimes you get the, you'll hear the comment that you're teaching to the test or you're teaching more broadly. Do you feel like this really makes you teach more to the NWA? Or do you feel that this is more, and that's a hard thing to gauge?
No, that's a, it's a, it's a great question. I would say no. And actually, something that I should point out on here is that when we're, we're going through this brainstorming process, we're looking at things that we, like, I wish we could zoom into that a little bit more up there so that you could see that better. But it's looking at the infrastructure. So we're brainstorming things like around scheduling and we're looking at our program. Where in our program can we maybe take, pull things out that we haven't been maybe taking advantage of or leveraging? It doesn't feel like teaching to the test because you're looking at the standards that are connected to the test. And that's connected to just the instruction that we're doing on a daily basis. And we're getting the information, of course, from, from the assessments, but I don't, I would say it doesn't really feel like teaching to the test.
Especially in the fall data, because fall data is pretty new, right? And so as far as instruction, we've only been in school two, three weeks. So as far as any instruction that's pointed towards the NWA or purposely to help with NWA data isn't done. We really use that fall data to give us a gauge on where we're at with those kids, what they lost during the summer, where we are curriculum wise as far as the big picture, but how we can drill down to each student and really, really look at the Tier One as far as in those kids in front of teachers and how can we help the most kids at one time, be efficient with our time.
Especially with like AmesWeb Plus, for example, because we're looking at students' oral reading fluency and we know that oral reading fluency is such a great indicator of their foundational skills. And so when we look at that, we can dig really deeply into looking at the different words that they're miscueing on. Like, is it an accuracy thing? Is it that they're unable to decode CBC words or is it a specific spelling pattern? And then from there, we also have what's called a quick phonics screener, which is diagnostic and it goes and digs into those holes that students might have so that teachers know how to support them and differentiate the instruction and that phonics progression. And so really, it's just thinking about how to build better readers. And then when we have strong readers, then they're more successful on that testing in the future. But additionally, they're just more successful in life, right? So they're going hand in hand.
Another specific example related to math, if, just to go a little bit into, a little bit deeper, would be that a common thing that we've seen is that students have some difficulty with fluency in facts. And so obviously having fluency with basic facts is something that's going to impact them, you know, as they go further along in math. And that's actually a very layered thing, but that was definitely like one of the examples of something that came through in, in many data reviews or just foundational understandings. And like I said, when we look at the two data sets together, it feels less like, oh, we're going to try to make them do better on NWA. What can we do? It's more like what's at the core of where maybe some of these areas of need are coming from.
Thank you.
All right. Oops. Okay. So I think one of the magical things that comes out of this really is that relationship between the coach and the teachers, that coaches have really made a nice impact on what comes out of these data review meetings. In facilitating them, they're really able to ask good questions to help build capacity in teachers. And then what, what happens is in between each of the data reviews, they're able to follow up with teams and with teachers and support them in implementing these action plans. And a lot of times, that kind of just feeds off into other areas that we can provide support. And so having coaches to be able to follow up in between makes this more meaningful because teachers then have that opportunity to talk and collaborate and adjust and reflect. Whereas prior, maybe that wasn't an opportunity. So what we start to see is over time, those data reviews then impact teacher change. So teachers are learning about new instructional strategies, they're trying out new things, they're collaborating with each other. And then as a result of that, we see student change. So as the teachers start to adjust their instruction based on this data, they're then able to see that impact students. And then that does eventually trickle back to that data and we see those results come through in that next data review. So that's just been really powerful to be able to see the collaboration between the two, because that follow through was just so important. And I think teachers really see the value in the process when they have that in there. Narrowing that focus and making the, the goals helpful and accountable is also super important.
Yeah. Anecdotally, something that teachers have said without any kind of prompting is, wow, our data reviews actually feel like they're, they mean something. I, I think we're, we always got, we always got something out of the process, but they're, they're just seeing how like, it's not just something to check, like a compliance task. It's actually something that they look forward to because they know that they're going to walk away with meaningful information that they can do something with. And we do have more information about our students because of some of the assessments that we've added. I'm not a fan of us over assessing unless it has a purpose and I really do feel that that's where we are right now. And I think that coaches are one of the reasons that it's feeling more comfortable for people because it's not like fall, winter, spring, these are isolated events. The, the teachers know that they have somebody in their building, the instructional coach, who's there to follow up. And that's something, I, I feel like it's very natural as a coach, like that's the work that we're doing now. It just flows. And people have said it just feels more meaningful. So I think it's been extremely positive.
I have a question. It's just a big picture. I'm sure there's always been data review going on, but how long, just in terms of years, has this process or, you know, the, this particular process been in place?
That varies by building, I would say. I know, I can speak for, for Westwoods, that we've been doing this for quite some, I don't know, at least since I've been there.
Well, since I was, at least eight years, because I was there for you doing it before me at Westwood.
So this has always been in place, this process?
Yeah, but I would say that because we have a team of coaches that's, that calibrates, that gets together on a regular basis, it's more consistent now across the district, right? It's not just reliant on a really strong instructional leader in one building who picks us up and reads a book. Now this is the standard for practice so that all teachers have this opportunity to engage in this and this time to reflect on how their kids are doing in all of our elementary buildings.
And how long has that been happening?
Okay, that's way less long, right?
Well, that's three years. Because I'd say it's, I think bullet two, when we talk about engaging coaching cycle with multiple checkpoints. So we would do this at Westwoods. Jessie and I would go through the data cycle, all schools did. I think where we would fall short is as far as that engaging in a coaching cycle with multiple checkpoints with every single teacher in the building. While we're running the building, you know, maintaining safety, subbing for teachers that are not there, doing lunch duty, all those other things it takes to run a building, having someone now there to focus on solely curriculum, even running these data meetings. I attended a couple of these data meetings in the fall throughout the district. And throughout the data meeting, right, if you just have the, where it used to be admin running the meeting without the coach and there's something that comes up in the building, the data meeting stops and it loses value. Well, if you have the coach and admin there, principals are part of this process, but if something were to happen during that meeting, that needs attention, right? You can remove somebody from the discussion and so continue with the meeting and have it be valuable. Because that's a lot to get a data meeting together with guest teachers and everything. So that second bullet about where we actually have a structure around it, it's guaranteed to happen regardless of behavior in the building. So it makes it super equitable as far as our eleven elementary buildings go.
And coaches are not a value tip, right? So it's a really safe place to sit and collaborate and have conversations and talk about data because sometimes data can be hard to look at. And so it's an opportunity to just have that safe spot.
I should add that it's been going on longer for reading data and that we've worked very, very hard as a math team to make it the standard also to be doing math data reviews at the elementary level, just like we do reading data reviews.
And so adding Ames and Delta has really fleshed it out more?
Yeah.
And how long have those two been added?
We just had universal screening for Ames K-5 just this year. So we would have some data for Ames depending on the student's percentile. We would take students in the lower percentiles and do Ames on them in order to determine their Tier Two needs, but now we have it for all students and that's super helpful.
And then Delta Math has, like I alluded or said earlier, has been around for, I don't know, at least six or seven years in our district. But because of feedback that we were getting from people, teachers, administrators saying that they wanted more specific information about students, I mean, NWA is good, but they wanted more, we made the recommendation as a math team to add Delta Math screening as a, just everybody does it, not just some buildings do it. Because it was about 50% that were choosing to use that, that measure and now it's everybody. So that's kind of positive, I think. Great. So now we're going to move on to our secondaries. So, you know, one of the things I, I just want us to consider is we have four large secondary buildings in this district and, and these guys, the admin teams and the counselors, there's been a lot of plates, right? It takes a lot to pull off a building with that many teenagers in it. But I, I think part of the work that we don't see as much is what happens proactively to set the stage. Because if they're successful proactively thinking about what are we, how are we screening our kids? What are we looking at? How are we intervening before there's a problem? We actually never see any of that, right? It's very upstream thinking. And they do a lot of that in their teams. And so I wanted, I invited both Ms. Studeman here and Mr. Berger here to talk about, and these happen at all four of our secondaries, but show you a little bit of what is some of that upstream thinking that happens behind the curtains so that they're not always responding to everything or waiting for a crisis to occur. So Kristen, I'll let you go first.
No, of course. One of the things that I like to address out of the gate with middle school is just that transition from elementary where a lot of people come in with the assumption that when you're at middle school, kids kind of just, they're part of this flow where they no longer are individuals. And just like Jessie said, there is a lot that's done proactively, both at adult requests, like with our SST team, our student support team that we talked about this summer when Mr. Howe and I were in, working to make sure that our Tier One interventions, our Tier One instruction is really working for all kids. But what we want to be careful about is that we don't just have a system where the squeaky wheel gets the support. With middle school kids, oftentimes, behavior catches attention. So if a student doesn't have attention getting behavior, how do we ensure that they are getting the support that they need? So we asked that question at the start of the school year last year. How do we catch kids who might not otherwise rise to someone's attention when they just begin to have issues with grades or with attendance? Power School is the tool that we use to leverage the answer to that question. And essentially what we've begun is we've begun this systematic approach where our counseling staff at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade level, at the end of every month, they pull basically a risk report for students that flags kids based on concerns with grades and with attendance. The attendance threshold is slightly lower, especially at the beginning of the school year than we would have for truancy. So like Jessie said, it allows us to hopefully get ahead of truancy before we have to start sending letters. We can be more proactive with those supports before we have issues. With the, the grades, it's, you know, students who are failing 50% of their classes, 35%, 20 and 5%, we have the ability to, to pull at those different levels and look to see where kids are at. So our counselors, at the end of each month, they pull the report on a Monday. We meet as a full team. And by full team, I mean all counselors, grade level principals, myself and our social worker. And we go student by student through the list of kiddos. Some months, it's bigger. It could be because it's the start of the semester and you have one failing grade and all of a sudden, your grades are tanked. It could be because we have a lot of illness, so we've had higher absences that have caused the list to get bigger. But whether the lists are big or small, we go through kid by kid and we identify for them whether we know their support's in place, who their support person is. So if they're a special ed, special education student, we reach out to their caseload teacher and say, hey, I think you need to wrap this kiddo up. If they're 504, we make sure that that counselor has an action item to leave with. Some students are new to us and that's really the point of this, is to catch those kids who might not otherwise have supports. For our students who, and this is just kind of a comprehensive list, I pulled some examples of, of what we had from last year. For those students who are new to us, it could be anything from a one-on-one conversation over the course of that month with the counselor about what's going on. We have students who have the capacity to right the ship on their own if they're just kind of, if it's called to their attention. We have students who need a lot more support. And so in this list, you can see that we've done everything from well child checks, calling home to, to make sure family's involved, assigning them learning at lunch. Sometimes they just need more time to catch up. Emailing caseload teachers, even initiating child finds so that we start that 504 IEP process for, for students who, you know, have, have gone through the SST process, but this team identifies that they're still having issues. So we just really make sure that the conversations that need to happen, happen. And the reason that we pull in the full team is that we feel like that objective outside lens helps us to not say, well, it's just, you know, this is what's going on and not look at the, the problem from different angles or whatever the concern is for the student from different angles. So again, it's So again, it's it's really quick improvement cycles targeted individually at students. The data is pulled at the end of the month. For the month of November now, our counselors are gonna implement the strategy that we came up for that student. We'll pull the data at the end of November, we'll see if it worked, if it didn't, then we just keep asking what's next? What else do we need to try for this student? It's worked really well, um, over the course of the year, I'd say we've had last year probably fifteen to twenty kiddos. Who weren't on our radar, who for whatever reason, in that moment of time, just needed some extra help. And so it was able to match the help they needed um, with the supports that are available at West Middle School.
That's great.
Okay, we'll move on to just an example of how our high schools. This is Central High School in particular, I wanted to hit east and west side of town for you guys, um, monitored thirteen hundred students, so.
So um, yeah, so one of the biggest things we wanted to explain today is how we take a school with. Thirteen hundred and twenty-nine kids and make it feel really personalized. And as we were, you know, thinking and preparing, a story came to mind, we had a student transfer, a family transfer in their ninth grade year from. Another area school that's much smaller. And about two weeks in, a parent saw me in the hallway and said, man, what they say about you is not true at all. I'm hoping this leads to a good thing. And and she said, all we heard was horror stories about how you would be a a number or a date, but you'd get lost in the shuffle. And and our experience thus far has been anything but. And so she began to talk about how our wing offices really make it feel like a school within a school, and so today. Our data journey is is gonna start at the macro level and how we look at all data and then narrow down, and Nate's gonna finish with a specific. Student success story. And so we work really hard and each week we pull as an ad team. Three assistant principals running three wing offices with about four hundred and fifty students in those offices. So we pull, this is whole school data you're looking at, and it's. Can be really confusing and colorful and the graphs, but we look at two things when we look at academic data, we look at our total Fs in the building. So that's the chart on the left. And then we look at students with one or more F, the total Fs tell us schoolwide what's going on. And then the the students with one or more F tell us the individual student struggles that are happening at a greater level. And we're this year, we're in that green, so you see, we're 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 in a really good place compared to the last three years. And so that green data, we have less total Fs in our building right now, and we have less students with one or more F. And and then from this, each wing office led by an assistant principal that has a counselor and an admin assistant, and it takes it and they do weekly team meetings. And then they look at their specific students in their office to start tearing that down, so I brought Nate Kepler here. He is the assistant principal in our Uli office who handles um, last names Q through Z. And he's gonna break down what that looks like in his office on a week-to-week basis, and then how we um, get down to the one student we're gonna talk about. Oh yeah, I'll hit next.
Okay, so breaking it out to the Uli office, there's about four hundred, well, there is four hundred and nineteen students. That we service, and that's a counselor, we need me and myself. Um, of course, there's other team members, special ed, um, social worker. But essentially, we sit down every single week, uh, we look at F list and we tally that F list to see which students have one or more, how many they have. We look at anything from social, emotional, so any feedback from teachers, I'm really relying on them as the frontline, um, seeing our students on a daily basis. Anything that we hear about in the office or from my wing AA is a valuable member of the team, she. Brings attendance lists and she has the frontline to communication with parents. We look at all things, including behavior data, that really try to like, give us the picture of the individual student. Cause that's the one thing that we know of the fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred students that come through our building, every individual student comes with a story. We do some proactive upstream things as well, we have freshman meetings, we meet with all freshmen. I'm making sure there's that touch point with the wing office, one, opening the door. So that students know where their home base is and where they can come for support. But two, we don't mean to be kind of more of an old school assistant principal where we only see the students that are having behavioral issues, so. Uh, really wanting to build that connection from the start. We also have counselors go down to middle school and eighth grade and meet with counselors there. So trying to start that narrative, um, taking with a grain of salt because a student does change over time, but. We wanna get a little bit of a heads up on who that student is coming into our building. We also meet with our new students coming in, really to try to create that school within the school feel. Uh, making sure that the students that are entering, in some cases, for them a huge change in a huge building. We wanna make sure they feel comfortable with where they are and who they can come to. So in our tier one monitoring, I have a list right there for you guys. We have universal supports to go across the board for any student, um, some specific students with IEP like the SOAR class. But the TIE classes that we have in TIE nine and TIE ten. Of course, we have those freshman meetings, teacher weekly agendas, um, we really kind of lean on our teachers to support a lot of those universal supports as well. So what I've done here is I've broken it down for you, um, just in my wing office, so. Three hundred and forty-five students are in this tier one, that's about eighty-two percent of the Uli office students. And one of the goals, as you probably know about the tier level of supports. Is we really want eighty percent is kind of our our goal, that all universal supports in tier one are supporting at least eighty percent of our students. Um, and then as you go up through the tiers, when you get to the yellow and you get to the red, you're looking at different percentages, the yellow is a little bit more. Other range, so anywhere between ten, uh, five to ten percent. To fifteen percent, and then when you get to the tier three, you're really looking at that five percent. And so this was a a bit of a really amazing eye opener and and for us to be able to see that, hey, we're hitting this mark and what does this look like? When we move to tier two. Um, and I put tier two and tier three here, so and what I've done is, um, if you look at tier two, it's all the universal supports, and then here's the additional supports. So as we're looking at those weekly meetings, we're monitoring Fs, we're monitoring behavior, we're monitoring absences. Um, and then we take the appropriate steps to be able to get to know the students, so. In tier one, we're meeting with all the freshmen, in tier two, we're really starting to hone in on what is the individual student's story? That could be causing either, maybe this is a an anomaly, um, or maybe this is something that's consistent, where a student is starting to struggle. So this is where we wanna get more face time with the student, we wanna enact things like social work if necessary. This is where parent communication comes in, uh, we send out grade reports, we send out F list reports in individual wing offices and. Also giving them some understanding of what the supports that are available to the student. Uh, with things like the trails group, and this is where child find might be enacted as well. Is there another need that we're missing, that we need to make sure that we're addressing with the student? Um, and find what that potential hurdle might be. Attendance letters and all of those, but this is where we really start to get to know the family more. And get to know the student more, so we can really start to see what the needs are. And then if we look at the numbers on this one, just specific in the Uli office, um, this is about fifty-nine of uh, my students. So that's about fourteen percent of the Uli office that we are now looking at more of that communication, more of that understanding of who the individual student is and what their needs might be. When we go to tier three, um, this is where, I mean, this is a student that's really starting to struggle, or has been struggling and has moved up through the tiers. So this is where we really need to jump on all the supports that go from universal to tier two. And definitely those tier three supports, this is where child find is most likely enacted in some, to some degree. At least investigating that, but we're looking at potentially truancy officer involvement. This is where instead of that touch point, we're meeting with the students, we're meeting with the parents. If a student has an IP, this is where we might be meeting with the team on a monthly basis, um, as well to talk about behavior if there's anything there. But this is, when we get to tier three, the hope is, and the end goal of course, is that. We're putting all of our supports in place to start to see them go down to the tier two, and then obviously getting down to that tier one. With the ultimate goal in mind, that we wanna prepare these students for their post-secondary hopes and dreams. And we know that if they can access school, and every story is different, and it may be access at a four point O, but it might be access where they're just getting a sixty percent. For that threshold and maybe engage with CTC, looking at trade school or something like that.
What's the biggest reason why someone would go from tier two to tier three? And then what's the biggest support that could help them?
So one of the biggest triggers, and it's 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 more than one, but I always see F list as that determining like, hey. Now we have a kid that's failing three classes, is there anything else? Is, do, are we seeing it in attendance, are we seeing it in time out of class? Are we seeing it at home? What kind of story is happening at home to be able to to see? Are we the only support structure for the student, and if so, what do we need to do? So social work, getting more people, more hands on deck, more understanding of who this student is. Communication directly with the teachers, making sure that they understand the story to what they need to know. And really making sure that when a student enters our door, they know that we're there to support them and we have everything set in place. Could be uh, peer mentor tutoring, which is new this year, um, where NHS uh, students, volunteers are meeting with students during class. Uh, during the day to be able to support math and ELA or science. And then it's the monitoring, uh, the biggest thing that I see is we look at the tier three, if we start to see a student be more successful. How are we continuously monitoring that? It's not like, okay, great, they're doing great now, let's step back, it's continuing to monitor and support the student.
What percentage of these students in, I would say, tier two and three are involved in something?
It's a great, great question, um, I just had a a meeting with a parent yesterday in one of, and. It's with a student that would be in the tier three category. And the biggest discussion is what can we get them engaged with? Are they into EA sports, are they into uh, Dungeons and Dragons? Are they into something like, uh, we have amazing coaches, um, thinking of wrestling coach coming up with wrestling season, we often like. Get him to meet with the student and the family, to be able to say, hey, this might be a really cool opportunity for you to get engaged. Cause one thing we do know, if a student is disengaged with anything at school, that it's harder for them to engage and and really. Get ingrained with what the process is and what the success might be that they could have. Thinking specifically to middle school students, if they've had a negative relationship with school K through eight. And then they enter into high school and all of a sudden, we're looking at graduation and credits. That's, that's something we really need to try to get those students tied to something. If we can do that, and and sometimes there's the pushback from the student because they're not ready. But we're gonna be ready and waiting for them when they are, and making sure that they have every possibility to connect to school.
And and to your point, Flannery, last year we drilled down to nine freshman boys that were not connected to anything. And out of that, they fell into tier two and three, there was zero tier one boys out of that that weren't connected to them, and so. That is something that we absolutely try and do too, and it's interesting too, because we see. Almost like fake it till you make it in September, because especially with freshmen, they really. Wanna reinvent themselves in a new building and and we see like. They're working really hard to either mask deficiencies that have followed them through K eight, or um, they want to. Change their reputation, but then it starts to fall apart when those first assessments come through and they're not at grade level, and then the behaviors come out. And so that's when we see kids jump right from tier one, sometimes to tier three. And so then it's like, what supports do we have? And like Nate had mentioned. For years, we had had um, tutoring after school called Homework Hub, and and then, you know, we looked at the data and we were. Reaching such a little percentage of those students, and it was mostly because of transportation issues. And then those that were there, it was not productive because we're taking a student who struggles in school and saying. You have to do full time and an extra hour, and that wasn't good, and so this year we've tweaked that and we're saying. What's the piece of the pie in their school day that we can cut out, maybe it's ceramics once a week? And get you with a peer tutoring during your school day, and so we're already seeing some results there where we've got. Fifty students engaged in that, which is double what we had in Homework Hub, and it's happening during our school day.
And I just, this is a really uh, obvious question, but just for clarification, the F list are literally kids that are failing, is that right? What about the kids that are like at the D, you know, I mean, how are, how do they get captured?
And we can run in each individual wing office, so like, we run the F list, but we can run a DEF list as well. And monitor the students that are on that cusp, especially if they've been on the F list and now they're just coming above it. We wanna continue to stay on those students and make sure that sport's there. So we can do the same, and and what I do in my office is we we run the F list and that's great, but then we do. A secondary list where we're actually tallying up, so how many students have like Ds and Fs, and what does that look like? And so how can we extract those numbers to be able to make sure that we're still supporting the students? And again, the upstream approach, like how can we get them before they get there? All the other indicators are helping us out too, so we know like attendance and behavior is gonna be sometimes the first indicator before we even hit the F list. So we're looking at the whole student and not just the F list to drive. Any other questions on these pieces here? Alright, well, I have a story for you, and I love stories and we, I mean. I love what I do and I love connecting with students, and so this one um, continues to allow me to wake up every day and be. Extremely excited about what we do because we see these successes, and so here's a student, um, the storyline goes like this. Incoming freshman. The first semester, um, significant behavior concerns, um, students started failing courses pretty quickly. And looking back into East Middle, um, there are some issues there too academically, behaviorally. So first semester was pretty tricky um, with this student. And as we identified through our process of weekly meetings and the freshman meetings. We started to quickly realize, hey, this is a student that we need to really wrap around and support and figure out what the story is. Some of the story is there's very limited support from home, um, well, meaning folk, uh, parents, but. Not necessarily available to be able to support the student at home and potentially not that trajectory. Hey, we're looking to get their high school diploma. So very limited progress through semester one, um, so some of the pieces that we looked at is child find was enacted. We started, I started meeting with the student quite regularly, um, communicating with parents when they were available. Fast forward to the second semester, um, so we looked at a couple of scheduled shifts, one that we could do without an IEP, which is the TIE program. The IEP, we did enact an initial evaluation and the student was found eligible. And this was per request of teacher and admin, just because we saw the need. And so that also opened up CoTop Math and it opened up our SOAR class, which is working. On success attributes in organizations, uh, study habits, uh, extra time and space to. Get more support in some of the core subjects, um, so semester two, all of that was shifted over. In his freshman year. So at that point, the student found more success, um, has a caseload teacher that's working with him directly. And we started to see a very significant change um, to a great degree, and this isn't just academics, but it's also the behavior component. Fast forward to sophomore year, um, continue with the TIE ten program, continue with the SOAR class, continue with CoTop Math. And ended sophomore year receiving all the credits. They did a summer school semester, their summer school as well last year, and fast forward, they're now junior, um, eleventh grade. Their goal was to get all the credits so they could attend the CTC, um, because they had a strong interest in looking at trades post-secondary. And at this point, I'm super excited to report that they're fully on track to graduate, um, there's not been behavior concerns. I still meet with the student regularly just to say hi and make sure they're doing okay, um, just cause as we know, a student that is finding that success that had. Past maybe not success, there's, it's very easy to slip back, um, so continuing to meet with them and monitor. To make sure that they will um, reach their senior year and graduate on time.
That's great.
Yeah, so you know, we were hoping that we just kinda gave you guys a little bit of a glimpse of like how hard our people are working behind the scenes to really proactively. Know our kids and respond, um, so that we can support them to be successful, so.
So um, getting a five oh four designation, is that still? Seems like. I mean, how do you get a five oh four, and that can be brought on by the teacher, by the parent?
Can be per parent request, um, can be per student request, teacher, admin, um, once there's a request in place, we have a process. And we follow IDEA to an extent, um, but we usually look at thirty days max school days to make sure that we're doing that evaluation. Uh, we generally have more of a two-week turnaround. But we get teacher narrative, we get PSAT data, we get um, current teacher um, grades and what that data looks like, we get. Student narrative, parent narrative, um, and then we pull the team together, so counselor, admin, um, the parents, sometimes we invite the student. And we look at all the data to answer two potential questions that would determine eligibility. One is, does the student have a physical or mental impairment? Um, and that does not have to be diagnosed for a five oh four, in IEP, it does have to be diagnosed, um, so it can be suspected. So we answer yes or no based on the data, the second question is, does the physical or mental impairment substantially limit major life activity? And so we look at the data and we always connect it back to the data, and if there's anything in there that says, yep. A student has ADHD and there's a pretty significant difficulty with um, focus in class. Then we look at that and make sure the data aligns, and we'd answer yes um, to that one, if both those answers are yes, student is eligible for a five oh four plan. Um, but then we go to a third question and we look at, are there accommodations that are needed? So because a student, just because a student has a five oh four, doesn't mean they need accommodations, so we go back to the data and we look to see, okay, well. Is there a hurdle that an accommodation would help a student access standing curriculum the same as their peers? And if the answer is no, then no accommodations, but then we monitor, um, if the answer is yes, then we look at what those accommodations would be. And then we put that plan out to the teachers and make sure that they're aware and following.
And just piggybacking off that, it's important to know that students with five oh fours. They can still qualify for section five oh four for the protections for anti-discrimination, but like as Nate said, not.
but like, as Nate said, not need that formalized plan. So you're always under that umbrella of five oh four in terms of the protections, but you might not need a plan until maybe it comes to light, oh, we're really starting to struggle, and that's when we put that accommodation plan into effect.
That's great. Great. Wow, we're on to some celebrations.
And thank you all for being here. This was, I know it's time of your day, but really, really great to hear you.
No, we're staying, I wanna stay for something.
Good stuff. We just, we thought this month, you know, eight weeks in, and, and these eight weeks are always sort of that, a really big push for educators to, you know, not only get their classrooms ready, get their buildings ready, but get to know their learners, engage their learners, start all those connections. And it's a lot of work as an educator, and for our teachers on the front line. So we wanted to just kinda take a moment and celebrate some of the successes that we've seen our staff do this last month, so.
Yeah, for elementaries, we just discussed this, this is a data meeting happening at Willow Hill, having our co-chair, ELA person there, also with the teachers. This is Mr. Connesett there at Central, Central Grade School, he's our assistant principal. This is him leaving the school trying to escape.
He looks like he's been trapped.
He's out of here, yep.
Not even his dog.
His dog, so, neighbor, sorry.
So this is Bike to School Day, so Central Grade School met at Thorby Field, and that is his therapy dog that he uses at the school, certified. He brings it on a daily basis. So therapy dogs, I don't know if you've ever seen them in action at schools, but we did have one out at Westwoods back in the day. They make a huge difference. You got a kid under a table, come out, you tried everything you can, you bring the dog in the room, it just works. So therapy dogs are awesome.
Yeah, and I would say K-12 too. We've got them at the secondary.
Twelve graders on the floor when the therapy dogs come out.
I mean, it's.
Principals, what's a lot.
Foremembers, foremembers, it's happened to me, it's happened to me. Old gossip.
West Senior High.
It's like a dust nugget.
And I would say, oh, sorry, I was just to piggyback on that. I talked with Mr. Connesett. He was working with Henry and a student. And to watch that student transform when he was starting to escalate, and Henry was brought, brought into the room, and just to watch that student come down emotionally was fantastic. And if you haven't met Henry in person, pretty, pretty cool dog.
But again, like on the focus here, our staff who, who take the time to train these animals, to get the certification, to do all the vet-needed things, the insurance things, again, it's our staff who step up and say, this is important, and we wanna do this for our kids. And so, you know.
Yeah, the connection he makes, right? I mean, you see your principal biking to school with a dog, it's amazing, it's next level.
Yeah, for sure.
Then a great opportunity we had with our ELA leaders in our, in our school, along with Brittany, and then Kirk Rainey also went from our admin from Blair to go to the Reading League Conference in North Carolina. So that was fantastic. Part of our learning this year, as we work with the Reading League, that adoption of CKLA, the science of reading, making sure we have the professional development, and the idea that these leaders come back and kind of train the trainer type idea, and that focus using that, that research-based curriculum that will hopefully boost reading for all of our students.
And then, of course, we had just, just a phenomenal night, couldn't have been better for Fall Football last Friday, our Patriot game. I mean, ten thousand people plus there, a great game until maybe the fourth quarter, sorry about that, that's a control. But just a great way for our kids to come together and honor our community, right? We had kids from Central and West worked together to put that game on, to raise money for area nonprofit. I know the, the, the girls, I think, played for the first time ever a powder puff game against each other, and that was a lot of fun, I heard. So just celebrating all of TCAPs, in addition to having a football game, so.
That was great.
Instructional rounds, this is just a photo of that for you. We, we've held two large visits at this point. East Middle School has hosted a visit of about twenty-two educators, so they come for the day, view the classrooms, and then they take their observations and make patterns and predictions for that building. And then also, West Senior High hosted a day for about the same, about twenty-two educators. I know West Middle School's on the docket for November, and Central High School's hosting in December, and then some of the elementaries are gonna start. It's been a little easier for our larger buildings to sort of carry the torch first, and our elementaries have been able to engage and watch the process, and now they'll start some of those as well.
Yeah, all the elementaries will do a one internal round this, this year, as far as working the process within their own building. Westwoods was a little bit ahead of the curve. Toby did a lot of that rounds training early on, when we first had that first go-around at TCAPs, he'll do an external visit. So super nice, so secondary, kind of the second year in a row now that our elementary principals had the opportunity to go. Now members of their leadership teams are attending these rounds, so make sure they have a firm grasp about how they run, so that we're, we hope guarantee it's successful at the elementary level.
And then it's, it's not just our instructional staff that have worked really hard these last eight weeks. Here's some support staff, security, that's an instructional aide as well, supporting some of the students over at Central High School. Just, just top to bottom, we have, you guys know this, we have a phenomenal staff in TCAPs, and it's those human connections that really make the difference in our kids' lives and in our families' and our lives. So wanted to highlight some of them as well. And then this is one of our, I didn't know if you were gonna talk on this tight, sorry. This is one of our EL teachers from West Middle School, taking some of her students on a field trip as well.
Ah, good stuff. Love that we end with celebrations and successes. Good addition to the curriculum committee. Well, thank you again, everyone, for being here. And so our next board curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, December third, at eight thirty here in this room, and unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn the meeting. So thanks, everybody. Thank you, thank you.